So we have three through. You ready to explain all that?
I think so.
Yeah, Tom, how are you?
Good, we'll put you right up.
I read your first, uh, resolution you sent over about the notes. I'm looking all through it. Where's Meadowbrook? Where's, where's, why, they missed it. I didn't get, I, then they came in a separate one, yeah. I was, I was panicking for a minute.
There is so many of them, I said, here, here, here. There are so many, I thought it was just the easier to hit four separate items. Let's do enough for each problem.
Yeah.
We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting in order?
Oh, okay, yeah, he needs some time.
This is the, uh, workshop for, in preparation of the regular meeting, February twenty-second. Um, I'm gonna start at the, uh, at the top. We have Attorney Wilson here. I, I would ask Commissioner Frenchco if you could join us. That's you. But Mr. Wilson's here to talk about the, uh, um, educational highway. And he needs all three of our signatures to move this thing on. And I'd appreciate if you can join us for at least a couple of minutes to hear him out and get a signature for him. That's fine. Okay, what number is that, uh? Lisa? The number nineteen. Uh, this is the adopt the resolution for the Board of Chumel County Commissioners to approve O R C five-five. Kinda take roll.
Mr. Councilman Maystock?
Here.
Mr. Malloy?
Here.
Ms. Frenchco?
Okay, we'll go to number nineteen to adopt the resolution for the Board of Chumel County Commissioners to approve the O R C five-five-five-three dash three-one statutory dedication of educational highway and champion township Chumel County as part of Chumel County road system. And I'll turn the floor over to Attorney Wilson.
Thank you. Uh, good morning.
Morning.
I was retained by the commissioners, um, months ago, maybe about a year ago, uh, in order to complete the statutory dedication for educational highway. Back in nineteen seventy-eight, uh, your predecessors, county commissioners at that time, um, accepted educational highway as into the county's roadway system, highway system. And it has been there for the last forty-five years. And, um, apparently back in twenty-twenty-two, when there was some effort at development in that area.
Do you have the microphone thing to do that? And that'll broadcast it louder.
Thank you. Again, I'm Tom Wilson. I was retained by the commissioners, um, in order to complete the statutory dedication of educational highway. Uh, this is the roadway, as I think most know, is out in champion township. Um, back in nineteen seventy-eight, uh, after it was constructed, um, it was owned by the county. Uh, they got a grant from the federal government to construct educational highway. It was completed, uh, it was accepted on the recommendation of the county engineer. Uh, and the commissioners then accepted educational highway into the county highway system under the statute. Uh, for reasons not clear, um, they did not dedicate that under the statute at that time. And, um, the roadway, educational highway continued as a county highway in the county road system. I think it's number thirteen-twenty-one, uh, for the last forty-five years. And with that in place, uh, when there was an effort at some development in champion township, the issue came up that there had not been a statutory dedication. Uh, the prosecutor, uh, provided an opinion that there had been a common law dedication, uh, but not a statutory dedication. So I was retained to get that moved through, um, which we have done. And, uh, now, uh, what we have is the plat that has been certified by the surveyor. Uh, and, uh, we now need, uh, the signatures of the county commissioners as owners of the property on behalf of the county. And, uh, once I get those, and later today, I will get the, uh, signatures, uh, from the director of the planning commission, from the county engineer, from the sanitary engineer, and, uh, from, uh, Mr. Fee, who's chairman of the champion township of Trustee. And, uh, I will then have that back here tomorrow to present, uh, to the commissioners so they can, uh, proceed to vote to adopt the resolution dedicating this under the statute, which is revised code five-five-five, uh, three point three-one. I think we're ready to go. All we need are the, uh, the signatures from the three commissioners at this time.
Sir, what was, in a nutshell, what was the whole of it for forty-five years?
Uh, I, I do not know. I don't know why they did not, uh, proceed with the statutory dedication before this.
Okay. Mr. Wilson, could it have been that, you know, that through sort of common law dedication, it was just, you know, accepted, it was being maintained, it was?
There are a lot of roads, Commissioner, in this county that were not statutorily dedicated.
Right.
That was common law dedication.
Right.
And that may very well have been what they, what they thought. They accepted it, it became part of the county system, it's been maintained, uh, by the county. Uh, the state, uh, includes it when they make their determination as to, uh, roads for purposes of, of funding. Uh, so it's, it's been on the books, it was only this one little item that had not been included.
And you're in agreement, you've had negotiations with the county engineer and his attorney?
Yes.
He's gonna sign it?
Yep.
This will be wrapped up for tomorrow?
Yep.
All right, thank you for your work, thank you for your service.
All right, very good.
Mr. Wilson, thank you.
Yes.
All right, I'm happy to sign that now so you can get on your way.
All right.
Well, Tom, is, I'm Gary Newborough, you're looking at voicemail. My signature's on there.
That's the sanitary engineer.
Yeah, sanitary.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I won't have to track you down. As soon as the commissioners have signed it, if you sign it.
We got the auditor here too.
Right, and yet, well, um, not yet. No, no, it doesn't matter which one you use. I'll take it up to Commissioner Frenchco.
Thank you, Tom, for the quick work.
Does he need mine today, or is it? Commissioner Malloy. Commissioner Malloy. Does he need mine today?
He's gonna need yours, but I think he said he had to get the other ones. And then you're the last one.
Okay, so it's around the meeting.
He'll tell you.
Okay.
Talk after, but how about that? News on that.
I, I called you last night and told you what Phil told me, but I haven't talked to him yesterday, so I'll find out.
I wanna have him get Gary while he's here, so.
Oh, that's right.
Wait until Commissioner Frenchco finishes up with him. So I can get Rex B. and.
Well, and I'm not sure if, it sounds like he needs mine like the very last, if everyone else is.
Maybe that's.
But I'll ask when he goes over here. If he needs mine today, I'll give it to him. So I'm the very last one, yeah.
Oh, so you won't sign it today?
Second to the last, okay, gotcha. Thank you, Nick, for the clarification.
I'll be bringing up the rear.
I won't be signing it today. That's fine.
No, ours are, I took the first two here, and then I'm gonna leave.
Okay, I, okay, I just didn't wanna have to wait.
I only say to our part.
Okay, same. Well, and I'm not being a pervert, so I'm leaving at eleven-thirty.
Whatever works best for you.
Do they work better?
Okay, yeah, I'm out, I'm out of here after number three.
Yeah, but they had, uh, E M A tomorrow, saying that I'm gonna have to back out of, so. The canics gonna give you Paul Bill, about Times Street to get in there eventually.
Oh, okay, sure, yeah, I'll reach out to Anthony.
He has access to the other two, but he said he would reach out, he said he had your number.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'll get ahold of Anthony when that time comes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alex, I did three Vietnam veterans yesterday and two today already. We're getting, we actually had somebody who came in and asked here, or. I like it when I get to surprise them though, it's kinda cool, it's like, we got something here.
I wear my kind of, and everything's in a bag, it's the type of thing that's in the bag, so all around my life.
First thing, I cry every time.
And lunch and, uh, lately, I haven't been going very far. Um, I would say maybe a mile. Like, I try to stay in the area and just kinda, I don't like to venture too far, you know? Yeah, it's kinda cool. Even like when I'm walking, I wear my tennis shoes, 'cause I broke my foot a couple of years ago, and like my dress shoes make my foot, or when I walk in and out. Well, even like, when I'm in the parking lot, it hurts, so. I got dust all over my dress shoes, and I had to like, go all day, I'm afraid of it. I was wearing my tennis shoes all around upstairs.
That'll make her go very fast on items, 'cause she wants to get, I have to leave like, I should leave my liberty, but I, if I don't, I don't. Tim and I have a match with somebody today, buying, and I go, oh, guys, brisket.
Oh, yeah, oh, that is.
We were trying, he, yeah.
Are you ready to go there, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah.
Christie's hair was so pretty today, wasn't it? I love her.
Who?
Christie.
Okay, you, uh, don't forget, Mr. Newborough, while he's here.
No, I, I will, uh, I'll get to you in a moment or two.
Okay, all right. And if we need a witness for that to grab somebody?
Yes.
Okay, commissioners, do you have something you wanted to go up to the front while you're here?
I just wondered, is there, anyone in the room that brought stuff in person specifically, it still hurts. Uh, I would like to have, or hiring something. Um, I don't get an actual hard copy of the, I would like to have those, but I hope to get them all the paper together. So, back home, if anyone of them has not provided something, I would like that. And Lisa, is everything else printed in?
Everything I have.
Is there a rating or?
No, that's a, that's a step increase.
Okay, let's move on back to the beginning. Okay, dispense with the reading of the minutes, approve the bills. Number three, receive the fiscal officer's certificate as signed by the Chumel County Auditor in connection with proposed issue of notes, and the principal amount ought to exceed three-hundred-and-eighty thousand to be issued in anticipation of issuance of bonds, pay the cost of expanding, improving water line system in the county, but not limited to Prosperity Waterline Project five W fifteen, and to pay issuance costs in all connection therewith. Auditor Yoder, or Christie?
Christie, Auditor's office. Number three, four, and five all go together with number six. So three, four, and five are the, approving the fiscal officer's signed certificate for, um, Prosperity Waterline, which is, um, three-hundred-and-eighty thousand, Allen Road Water Project, which is two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, and the elevator project of eight-hundred thousand dollars. These were all notes that were issued last year, and they're being rolled over this year. Some of them were paid off, uh, paid down. Uh, one was paid off and not being rolled over. But these are the, the amounts in the, the ones that we are rolling over. And then number six is the resolution that goes with all three of those. This isn't new, new issuance, this is just a rollover. From, I wanna say it was around July last year.
Very good.
And then number seven and eight go together. Uh, seven is receiving the fiscal officer's signed certificate for, um, four million, three-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars. There are four projects within here, this is a new note. Uh, the first one is the county engineer's garage, that's one-point-six million dollars, replacing the windows over for the jobs and family services building, that's a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Um, improving the county stone building, uh, that's one million, six-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand dollars, and constructing, reconstructing, equipment furnishing, and otherwise improving the county's engineering office building for nine-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars. And then number eight is the resolution that would go along with that fiscal certificate.
Okay.
Um, number nine and ten go together. Number nine is to receive the fiscal officer's signed certificate for seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for the Meadowbrook Sanitary Sewer Project. Um, do you want all the detail on that, or is it just in the Meadowbrook Sanitary?
I think that, that's fine.
Okay, and then the resolu, number ten is the resolution that goes along with the Meadowbrook Sanitary, uh, fiscal certificate. And then numbers eleven and twelve go together. Eleven is to receive the finance, the fiscal officer's signed certificate for five-hundred thousand dollars for the State Road Water Regionalization Project. And number twelve is the resolution that goes with that. Uh, the resolutions for eight, ten, and, um, twelve, those are all new notes. They're not rollovers like, um, number six. And then, um, just a note on that, uh, we had lost our Moody's rating because of debt that had been paid off that was related to that. Uh, we had, uh, it was a little bit of an issue last year when we did our notice issuance. This year, we worked with the Treasurer of State's Office and their O M A program to get a, a rating from them, and we were approved for that. So we are, um, hopeful that that will, uh, benefit us with this, uh, notice issuance.
And essentially, we lost the Moody rating because we didn't have, I mean, we were too fiscally irresponsible in some ways.
We had paid off the, the, the debt that was associated with that, that gave us that rating, which was good.
Right, but, but that's for lending purposes, yeah.
And, and Christie, I wanna say Christie's worked very hard on the O M A stuff, because that was, um, it probably would've been harder to actually go out for a reading, but this was still very difficult. Uh, we had to, a lot of paperwork that we had to submit, as well as sitting for an interview where they questioned our audit stuff, all of that. We actually still have to go back and revisit that again in August, uh, with the new audits. And so, they're, they were very thorough, but it, it, hopefully will pay off. And, um, interest rates are going down a little bit, so we're hopeful that this will be very successful.
Oh, very good.
A little bit easier than last time. And that program was recommended by our financial advisor, uh, Matt Suwinski, that you guys approved his, uh, renewal contract for this year. Uh, Blake Beasley from Calfie Holton Griswold, who's our, um, uh, bond counsel, and he's the one who drew up all the fiscal certificates and the resolutions. And honestly, Tim Reedy, our underwriter too. So, which was my job.
I thought you was our, our.
She retired, I believe, and Blake worked for the same company.
Okay.
Yeah, he kinda took over for her for two years. I think she's still part-time on some projects, but she's retired from it.
And I know that there were questions raised about voting for that contract with Matt, but one of the things that I maybe should've raised when those questions were raised last week is, this is one of those situations where working with somebody over a course of years, they understand us, they understand our financial position, they understand our history when it comes to debt. All of that is so important. And probably, that eight thousand that was approved is going to end up being paid for with the, with, with these issuances. It's just that, you know, they have that in there as a condition. Because last year, it wasn't, so.
Okay. Well, Auditor Yoder, thank you for all that. And just a little reminder, your first month on the job, you warned us about the Moody rating. And you, you're the one that recommended borrowing money for the elevator, borrowing money for the engineer's garage. So, you were a soothsayer, fortune teller there with that, so, great job on that.
I had good advice, I'm gonna tell you, I did. I, I walked in and got something, good. And that's the other thing, all, when she mentions the bond counsel, all of these folks have been really helpful at educating me on this. I had a little bit of knowledge, but not as much as I needed, and they've just been great. They've spent a lot of time with us on doing that.
Awesome, great job. Okay, number thirteen, authorize Danny Malloy, president of the board, to execute on behalf of the Chumel County Sheriff's Office the annual federal equitable sharing agreement and certification report for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, further recommendation of Major Villanueva. Major?
Tommy Villanueva, Chumel County Sheriff's Office. Uh, this is a agreement for our federal asset account, um, that is held right here within our office. But, uh, this is our, uh, well, all year long, we, we, we federal assets through our partners, our federal agencies. So any assets that are available to us, um, goes into the asset forfeiture portal. This is certified every year. Shows how much we bring in and how much we spend out of that asset. Which only certain things can be, that forfeiture fund. So that's basically audit, so to speak.
Thank you.
Concur with the engineer for right-of-way permit Jonathan Saxton, Village Energy Cooperative. And then number fifteen, concur with the Chumel County engineer to grant special annual supplier fleet permit, Corilla Contractors and Michael Settlemeyer. And then number sixteen, authorize the purchase of one nineteen ninety-three Ford F-seven-hundred bucket truck to be purchased from Brookfield Township in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to be paid from fund number zero-zero-two-oh-three-oh-seventeen-hundred, seventeen-hundred-one-five-oh-five-four-ten. No general monies are requested, and this is per recommendation of Chumel County engineer. Legality of that, any problems with that? Uh, Attorney Danzo?
Uh, no, uh, purchasing under the seventy-five thousand dollar threshold and from another political subdivision for both, there's no bidding requirements on that.
Yeah. So even though it's engineer, we have to approve it, or is this just for formality?
Generally, all the vehicles are titled in the name of the board of commissioners, and that's been a request from Corso over the years. Uh, so that's why traditionally, even for some of the agencies that you guys aren't the direct appointing authority for, that the automotive titles are still held by the board of commissioners.
So, county H R, Alex, Steven Jonesy-Bush, but it's one-hundred percent correct, thank you, Bill, for pointing that out. We hold the titles. So the county commissioners hold the titles, and H R ensures those vehicles. Um, and that is a stipulation to Corso, so I can back that up. Um, again, at the end of the day, we're accountable, I'm accountable. I have to make sure every single vehicle in this, in this entire county, not just, thank you, Bill, for pointing that out. Not just what we think of, just under the commissioners, but if the auditor had a car, if somebody else has a car, if Board of Elections has a car, we hold all that information, and it's very important, again, I've stressed to you, Melo, please, if you get a new car, you have to reach out to H R and make sure that we get. And every department has been working great in office since I've come on making sure, but we have missed cars in the past. Also, it's a great time to talk about driver's licenses. Your driver's license, if you are driving a car, have to be current. If your driver's license expired, you have to renew that through county H R and let us know. That's all I'm gonna say, thank you so much.
And I imagine that goes for, like, heavy equipment?
Absolutely.
Bulldozers, anything that's titled?
Everything.
Sheriff's foreman boat, anything like that?
Drones, uh, we have drones that we insure through the, I know it sounds silly, but we need to know about every single piece that you have equipment-wise, so we can make sure it's insured correctly. Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right, concur with Chumel County engineer and authorize purchase of vehicles as listed from Allstate Ford of Youngstown for the total purchase price of two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand. Vehicles released locally through Huntington National Bank. Total finance price is two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, four-thirty-two, with a leasing agreement for four-year term at four-point-eight-eight percent interest. They pay through the county engineer's fund. Um, Allstate Ford of Youngstown was able to offer these trucks below the State of Ohio Department of Admin Services Ohio Buy's contract, state bid item. Equipment to be purchased, three twenty-twenty-four Ford crew cab trucks, fifty-four thousand apiece, one Ford F-five-fifty, fifty-four thousand, and one Ford F-two-fifty, forty-six thousand. So I imagine because they went through the admin services Ohio buyer, no issues with this.
Correct, as long as, if, if you can buy an identical item at a price lower than what it's offered through the state purchasing program, that is a method that you can use legally. Uh, just the requirement is that you keep the documentation and backup for audit purposes to make sure you can show that it was in fact lower than that price.
Yeah. Eighteen, authorize Stacy Bond, Director, Chumel County nine-one-one, to enter an lease agreement with ComDoc for the purchase of six new multipurpose copy scan fax printers. The lease is for sixty-month period, the amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-four per month. The lease is for six new machines and service for two smaller units currently in use. Agreement hasn't been approved by the Chumel County Data Board. All right, it says here, for the purchase of six, but then it has a lease on there. So do we need to clear that up? It should be for the?
Lease.
Lease of six, lease?
Okay.
If you can fix that. And who do you have service with now, Stacy?
Uh, we're cur, Stacy Bond, nine-one-one director. Uh, we're currently with ComDoc. Um, since I came in in August, I saw the machines that we have, they're all, I think, eight to ten years old. Some are not working, some are having serious issues. Some of them are sold, they can't even get parts to service them currently. Um, usually, in, in previous jobs I've worked, you get on a leasing program where every three to five years, they come in and swap out new machines, um, and whatnot, so everything's current and running. Um, finally got ahold of ComDoc, um, they came in and gave us a proposal. Um, and then we also got ahold of, um, uh, Business Machines, which is based out of, I think, Akron area. Um, those are the only two companies that answered when we, we quote. Um, theirs came in at like five-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars per month. Um, currently with ComDoc, we're paying over six-hundred dollars a month for those machines that are essentially junk. Um, so this is saving us money, and we're getting all new equipment. So it was kind of a win-win to just stick with them. Um, we do have a new contact there, and they've assured us that we aren't gonna have any issues with getting a rep in there. We've never had issues with actual parts or service. It was more of getting somebody in to give us new quotes, to get this going. So, um, they are on a, probably about a two-month turnaround to get equipment in. So once we get approval to sign this, hopefully within two months, we'll have new machines.
Yeah, Alex, we, we have copying machines pretty much in every department. Is there any standardization? That's a pretty good price, as far as, if we ever looked at all the departments leasing through the same company to see what type of deal we can get?
I, I.
Or they all have their own?
That's a really good question. So I did find out through this process, because Stacy, uh, kinda asked me, and we, we looked at some things. Um, unfortunately, we all seem to have different contracts at different times. Um, so I do think that there's an area of opportunity. Um, again, I identified that pretty quickly. Um, right now, we just need to obviously get to people the equipment. Um, but I do think that there is always leverage systems that we could use when we go out to bid collectively, right? So if we do a larger. So if we do a larger contract, maybe county-wide, the next time, when we can get everybody lined up, maybe we can get an even better deal because we're leveraging, you know, sixteen departments versus one individual department every time.
Can, can I ask all department heads to provide a copy of the lease to you? And then look and see as they come up? As I said, that's a hell of a savings from six hundred a month to two eighty-four. I mean, we're saving some big bucks there with this deal that Stacy just got. And if we have sanitary or prosecutor's office or whatever it is have machine that just happens to come up, maybe we can add on to what we already have here, or at least look at it. I mean, because that could be?
Yeah.
Massive savings across the county if we can get a better deal like that.
And ComDoc is one of, you know, through state purchasing, ComDoc is one of our best. I mean, to be honest with you, they're very well represented in this area. Um, they basically, to my knowledge, have almost every machine outside of our HR one, which is coming up as well. That's a Rico, um, Rico machine. Uh, but ComDoc services JFS, DSA. I mean, there's a lot of companies that ComDoc already services. So I think we do need to try to look how we can leverage a better price collectively.
We did try to use local companies in the past.
Yep.
Crosby Mook was one, but I don't know if they're still, if they're competitive or?
Yeah.
You know, any of the... I just, you always try to buy local if you can.
Try to buy local, yeah.
But, but at the same time, it's gotta be competitive.
It's gotta be competitive. That's, you know, and that's why sometimes...
That's who you guys use? Okay.
Sheriff's Office.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and you guys did just recently go out to bid, recently, I believe, uh, your contracts relatively. So that's what I'm saying, everybody's kinda doing the same thing.
I know, I know.
And it is tough.
And they're comfortable with certain, especially different elected officials?
They are. And that's, that's the world I live in often.
I know, I know.
I deal with various, but I also gotta deal with every other elected official as well.
I know.
So it makes it a little bit...
Hard to get everybody on the same page.
Yeah. It's a little bit difficult. But at least, everybody underneath the commissioners, we could try to at least target that if that works, you know? And, and start small, and then maybe build up larger, so...
Yeah.
No problem.
Very good. All right, we did nineteen, twenty. Approve the updated purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of the warranty deed easement and temporary easement from CSX Transportation in the amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And allow the board of commissioners to sign the updated purchase and sale agreement for the Western Reserve Greenway Bike Trail Phase Four being located in Howland, Weathersville Township, in Warren and Al City. The acreage being purchased, the amount, uh, the purchase remains the same. The update was necessary, a CSX Transportation Legal Council required a language change within the agreement. Zach, is there something you, you wanna handle?
Yeah, oh yeah, this is mine. Doctor, so that is Trumbull County, my... Um, as Danny said, this is just something that CSX Legal requires us to, um, update the language for them. Um, and as soon as you guys approve that, we can get the project, or that closed out, and then we can get on to painting the bridges as well. So, sooner we can get this accomplished, we can get the...
Been a, been a long co... long time coming.
Yeah, they, they changed their minds every single time we come back with something new. We had to go through historical documents going back to the eighteen forties. So it, and it didn't, didn't give specific needs and bounds. So, you know, we had to jump different places, City Niles, uh, Trumbull County Courthouse, Trumbull County Quarter. So it hasn't been just going to one location and?
I know.
Giving all documents.
Sooner we can get it done, the sooner we can paint those bridges too.
Yes, absolutely.
And then, on a separate note, Zach, I'm sorry to shift gears, but will there be somebody?
Yes, there will be a board member at the meeting tonight, yes.
Will you be there as well?
Uh, John Brown will be there representing the board.
Nobody else?
Correct. I, it...
Okay, no, I'm just...
Other members, and other things going on.
At least there's representation there, that's great.
Yeah, correct.
It's really good. Will you be there?
Uh, John is gonna be there for the board.
Okay, you're not gonna be there though, then?
No.
Okay.
I guess John will be there.
But he'll be able to field all questions?
Yeah.
Legal and otherwise, or, I mean?
I, I, to the best of his ability.
Well, I thi... I think what they're, they're trying to do, and I don't wanna, you know, I, I, we've been down this road with them enough to know that, that the dam removal is something, is a bone of contention for them, I know that. But they, they believe there are, there are alternatives to removing that dam that could, that could potentially, according to their engineer, whoever they're talking to is, is, um, would be able to, um, accomplish the same thing as the removal of the dam base.
So, yeah, and let me...
And I, and I don't know this, I'm just, that's why we're having the meeting.
Yeah, let me just address this real quick, or to...
Yeah.
That they did submit some information, but are currently under review. And then if they have any additional information, we will review that as well.
I appreciate, we appreciate that, because...
We've been open to that from the beginning.
Zach, is there any way you can be there?
I, I guess not.
I mean, you are the executive director of the Park District, you are the link, you're the guy. You work for us in a sense, although you lead us as a board. I would like to have you there just for my general...
I would as well, Zach.
Because I've never been through this before.
Field some of these questions.
It's all new to me, and I don't wanna hear the John Brown say, oh, I have that, Zach. I don't know why he did that. I don't know why this is recommended. I don't wanna waste my time, or the township's time, or the people's time.
We could get to the bottom of it a lot quicker.
I mean, yeah, if we're gonna get to that...
Or if another board member that has the... I know you have engineers and lawyers on your board as well, or at least one lawyer and one engineer.
They either both have a town currently.
Well, if you're gonna change your schedule, I think it would behoove you to do so, if you could be there tonight. This is something you've known about. We've all known about it.
Yes.
And this is very, very important.
Very important to those individuals.
Not only to people in Warren Township, but, uh, all the citizens along the, the river. And without you there, it's, it's like having us have an illegal meeting without the prosecutor. I mean, then we gotta come back later, and then that's how rumors and everything fly around.
Agreed.
I mean, we don't wanna put you on the hot seat, but I'd like you to be there to answer the questions that you know. And I'd have John Brown assume what you would say.
Right. If you can make it, we greatly appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, number twenty-one. Approve the personnel action for the reclassification of chief auto technician within the Trumbull County Vehicle Maintenance Department. Position is currently held by Chris Smith. Pay range ten, step twenty-five years. And the new rate will be pay range eleven, step twenty-five years. Effective February twenty-sixth. The collective bargaining agreement between Trumbull County Commissioners and Ask Me, Local twenty-four ninety-three, Article twenty-nine, substantial change in the job descriptions, position exceeds the twenty percent increase stated as necessary in the article.
Mr.? Joe Hart, Trumbull County Maintenance. Uh, here's a hard copy if you wish to read it. I send emails as well for reading purposes, if you like it. Um, yeah, the daily duties will be expanded by daily, weekly, and monthly. He has obtained his Buster Certification Certificate, which he can inspect our in-ground tanks without a fee of hiring a company, other than every three years it has to be done by an independent. So, um, yeah, he's gonna resume a lot more duties in his job description on a daily and, and weekly basis. And this is justifiable, in my opinion.
Okay. Gary, can you, uh, get with Mr. Wilson, since he's on the clock? Um, so, this all falls in line, it's all legit through a union contract?
Yes.
And bidding and all that stuff?
There's no bid because of reclassification and stuff.
Okay.
So...
But he has different qualifications now that make him a new qualified for this?
And these are being added to his current as well.
Now, will his job be open for somebody else?
No.
Or is this just a change?
It's a change title.
Okay.
Just a job increase.
Gotcha.
Duties, more duties.
More duties, more responsibility.
Yes, sir.
But he's more certified than he was before.
Yes.
All right, I can handle that. And that is something that's, doing our own maintenance on vehicles is key, and it's gonna save us a lot of money.
Yes, yes.
So, having someone qualified to do that.
Taking inspections, he will be taking care of our generators off to the side, our jail generators, our number one generators, where we have a portable that...
So is he located over Panther?
Yes, he's at Panther Street. That's his, that's his main office down there.
Okay, how many other guys work there with him?
There's three others.
Yeah. I mean, like, his maintenance crew that does the same?
That's his, that's his automotive tech's, underneath him.
Okay.
No, they just work on the vehicles. He will be the primary on our generators and our fuel tanks, storage, uh, inspections, and all of that good stuff, so...
Gotcha. Um, question for you. You mentioned generator. Uh, nine-one-one center went down?
Yes.
A week or two ago?
Just went through that last week.
And, uh, someone said, you know, we got the backup generator that we bought, but it's in storage or something. What's the story there?
The generator that we purchased for the new nine-one-one center, um, we're holding off on putting it on. Uh, the generator that was there, um, has the new transfer switch in it. From what happened, what, from what I understand last week, and I talked to an electrician and our, and our staff that went out there, the CPU, the backup battery system, was in the wrong setting. That's why nothing transferred over. Thank goodness Roger was there, sorry, sorry. Thank goodness Roger was there, who had left and had a picture of where the setting should have been on his phone. He put the settings back on, and everything came back to normal. I don't know what happened with the CPU. That's something that's, you know, in a room that they take breaks with, I don't know. So...
It seems like we need to keep Roger on our Christmas card list for another year.
Send me a picture.
So he's, I mean, the generator is, again, and, and we all know this. I mean, their, their community sources, Alex, Steven, Jonesy-Bush, their, their actual physical location is not ideal. Their generator is in the same room, that's their break sta... not break space, it's a quiet room.
The transfer switch is in that space.
Right, so everything is in that same room. I mean, I...
So we, we didn't need a backup generator in this situation?
No.
We just needed the one that's there to be set correctly?
It was a programmer.
The backup could have been programmed wrong too, if it was there.
Yeah, exactly. But the new one?
That's my point, is where the generator is, eh, with the physical location, these things could potentially happen. Uh, you have employees in and out of that room.
Right.
Um, I hate to say that, but it's just, you know, the reality. So I wanna make that clear, that in his defense, or whoever's defense?
Oh.
The backup generator could have easily been flipped the switch, or something could have happened too, because there is employees in and out of there, so...
And that's the CPU of the battery backup that holds the memory on everything for seconds.
Now, we identify with the problem is?
New one.
If Roger had not been there, who was an ex-employee who just happened to be there as a contractor, um, is that something IT would have been able to figure out? Are we gonna be, have, have a need for IT in that department? Or are we still able to handle?
Yeah, they...
All of the, uh, issues that come up with nine-one-one without a Roger?
No. Pretty much, we...
Tim Hamperd.
Tim, Tim Hamperd, uh, director of IT. Uh, pretty much, we've been not really kept in the loop with, with nine-one-one currently. Um, we've talked with Stacy, um, you know, about the, the need for having somebody there that is of an IT background type of person. Uh, they've been lacking that, especially since Roger has left. Um, they, Roger was pretty much a glue that held up, held that whole department together, or at least the duct tape and paper clips. So, that's, that's kinda where we're at right now. If, if we wouldn't have brought over there, if, if, if Roger wasn't there, we wouldn't, there, there'd been no way of getting that back out. That's, that's another piece to that mess that is nine-one-one that is, that lacking right now.
So what do you recommend at this time? Cross our fingers and pray?
Get, get, get out of that building as soon as possible.
Yeah, it's, it's...
It's, uh...
So, so, to go back to the new generator? Um, it's in storage, it's being held undercover, just because I, with nine-one-one locating or trying to relocate to a new facility, I'm not gonna install a new generator, I have to turn around and move it again. So we're on, the company that has it is on hold, they're storing it, no, no charge. But when the time comes, when we find them a home? That general will be for the nine-one-one facility, yes, in the proper place for it.
That's basically what we're all saying, I guess, which is nice, that we're all in agreement. But there's really, I hate to say this, I don't love to say there's not a solve, there is a solve, but the solve is a new building. That's it. I mean, it's really that simple.
I think we, we have a key piece in place, and Stacy, Stacy fully understands exactly what needs to be done. It's just a matter of getting, getting to that point.
And then when we get to that point, um, we need to, all of the other junk that's in there?
Yes.
I mean, it just needs to go.
Yes.
It's, it's, it's unbelievable.
Right.
I mean, how many years of, I think there's like nineteen seventy, like, old school, I mean, it's crazy. It needs to go.
Right, I carried that all upstairs.
Yeah.
All right. Twenty-two. Enter into non-reimbursable extension agreement for the extension of a sanitary sewer in accordance with ORC three oh seven seven three with John Robinson, managing member of Robinson Real Estate Investments on Lee Road, Brookfield Township, Trumbull County. Combined Sanitary Sewer District Metropolitan Sub-District, known as Lee Road, Sanitary Sewer Extension Project Number nine S twenty-two. Subject approval of the prosecutor's office.
Uh, your question is Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer. This is a private extension for five vacant lots. Um, that Lee Road, that's, that's behind the Valley View down in, uh, Brookfield Township.
So this guy's gonna pay for it?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, he, he, he pays to extend the sewer, but he has to have an agreement in place with us. He's gonna put it in to, uh, install it to our standards. We'll have an inspector out there watching how it gets put in. And after it's all said and done, then he turns the infrastructure over to the county.
All right, so you do the, the, the design and engineering for it, and they put it in, or?
No, no, he does the design, engineering, PTI through the EPA, full nine yards. He, he goes out and he constructs this for his development.
We do a lot of private extension.
Yeah. Yeah, and at the end of the day, it gets turned over to us to be our infrastructure.
Okay. So then we'll do the billing and everything after that?
Yeah, operation and maintenance of it, and the, and the billing and all that, yeah.
We just oversee that it's being done correctly and up to par.
Yes, yes.
And this is good with the prosecutor's office, the subject of the approval, you're good?
Yeah, these are, these are essentially form agreements that, that the sanitary engineer's office have used. We've reviewed them multiple times. On a lot of these private extension agreements, in fact, I think virtually all of them, it is a fill-in-the-blank, essentially, name, and then we attach the project scope and everything to it. So, yes, we, we've done it a number of times.
Yeah, it's a boilerplate agreement.
Gotcha. Okay. Uh, twenty-three.
Uh, commissioners, this is, uh, our annual RFQ for, uh, water sanitary sewer projects. Uh, Scott Furner, he, uh, reviewed all the qualifications sent to us. And these are the ones who, uh, had all the proper documentation in place.
Okay, and...
And there was one, I think, yeah, fourteen out of fifteen of them had all the required documentation.
We literally have one qualified design firm that's based out of Trumbull County, just one?
Uh, let me see here.
Canton, Canton, Akron, Akron, Youngstown, Youngstown.
Well, we got MS, we got MS, we got Folk. Uh, EPD is in Youngstown. Okay, yeah, but as far as Trumbull County goes?
As far as Trumbull County's based, the Intersect BSR is the only one?
Well, Folk has an, Folk has one, an office over here on Monroe, Southfield.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, that's about it.
Now, are there other firms, or just these the only ones that bid, as far as you know?
These are the ones that send in their qualification statements. This doesn't preclude them from bidding, from getting engineering projects on any of the projects. This just gives us a set of their qualification statements. If we go out for RFQ on a project, they don't have to resubmit it.
Gotcha, they're already free and certified for second.
Yeah, they're, we, we already have it on file. They sent a letter of interest, yes, we'd like to be concerned. We have their qualification statements on file, and when the engineers score for that particular contract, that we pull out their qualification statement and read through it again.
Okay. And again, this is all good with you, Bill?
Yeah.
Good for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the reason we did this in the first place, uh, back in the day, we had eight projects out for RFQ at one time, and it just becomes, you know, eight piles of all these qualification statements that all these engineering companies put in, but we really only needed one from each of them, so.
Okay, twenty-four. Adopt a resolution authorized Danny Moye, President of the Board, to execute Ohio Department Transportation Office of Transit Specialized Transportation Program, Subaward Grant Agreement Amendment for ODOT Project Number SPAM oh four oh eight oh one eight two three one contract. Amendment necessary to extend the end date and amount, update the amounts listed for ODOT CY twenty twenty-three grant. Uh, who was the answer in a nutshell?
This is our, this is our disabled population, fifty-three, uh, ten.
Diane Jacobic, Senior Levy Office, um, this is just an extension, ODOT wanted to line up their grants with their fiscal calendar starting July first, so they automatically extended our contract six months, and they automatically gave us three hundred and fifty thousand dollars more to spend for our transportation. It's going to cost us locally eighty-seven thousand five hundred as an increase. We can afford it within our local share that we've already committed to for two thousand twenty-four. We're still waiting on, thi- this particular, um, agenda item addresses that as an update for you in transportation. We're waiting for the contract for the, what they call Contract Year Two Thousand Twenty-Five, which covers our transportation grant from July two thousand twenty-four through June of twenty-five. And again, our local share we've already committed should carry us through June of two thousand twenty-five for transportation,
Awesome.
For the most part. We might need additional funding for disabled, it seems like that has really grown, and that's what Mike oversees. Um, so all good news in the transportation as far as for senior and disabled.
Okay.
And I made out the budget changes for the audit department, to just update what we've given them in, in the past.
I, I think- I think it is growing, and, uh, made the switch and- many vendors now, and not just one. But, called Diane recently about an individual that I met, hundred years old, by the way, um, which is amazing, he's in great shape, but didn't know of any of these programs, uh, of any of the senior programs. We gotta do a better job of getting the word out there, you know, he says, there's nothing to do for seniors in Turnbull County. I said, what are you talking about, you know, and I started listing all this stuff, you know, our senior centers, our, our scope centers, our transportation, he needs rides, and- I, I'm sure he ended up calling you, 'cause I gave him your number, and, uh, we got him hooked up. But we gotta do a better job of getting the word out about those services, 'cause there's still seniors out there that don't know.
The sad part, though, is that we can say we have this, they call, put you on a waiting list.
I know.
Because we don't have the funds to meet the demand right now.
I, I will tell you, though, that over the last two weeks, I've had conversations with Commissioners in two other counties, and in conversation of just, hey, how do you do this, how do you do that? We far exceed a lot of our neighboring counties when it comes to our senior services, um, great job to you with that. And that's something that they, um, kinda related to me, that's not top of their priority list, the things they do there, that they, they do have grants to come in and stuff, but as far as having, uh, someone like Diane dedicated doing what she does, and the amount of rides that we provide for people, uh, I can tell you Portage and Giaga don't do that like we do, so.
Well, and I think too, you have to, just something that I noted, um, Turnbull County has a, a huge aging population, so that is the majority, that might be a little bit of the difference too, and I'm just throwing that out there. Uh, Turnbull County is, you know, median age is, we are up there, and so that's, I think, why it's so important to have it. Diane does more than just transportation, there's meals, there is, I mean, there's multiple things that they do, so.
Adult protective, all, all this stuff.
Yeah.
So be prepared, the council is working on coming to you, um, with the idea for two thousand twenty-five funding, um, to expand our services and how we're going to plan on doing that. That's one thing, and we have this Ohio Aging Grant that we're also bringing to you, uh, within the next two, three weeks, with recommendations of funding new programs, so we are expanding, thank you, to the eight hundred thousand dollar grant.
And a portion, and a portion of that can be used for transportation as well, with the Ohio Aging Grant.
Yeah.
Which is gonna be beneficial to us.
And that, or maybe where, and I don't know if you can do this, or if you need some help from us, what Commissioner Ken Amelie was saying is, we have these programs, maybe we have so much going on that we're not able to elaborate to the public on everything we have, and, and your hopes of getting more funding next year and down the road, and possibly renewal of the levy and maybe an expansion, it may behoove us to start tooting our own horn and maybe investing in some television commercials on what we offer here in Turnbull County, maybe radio, just something to let the seniors know, Tribune.
Tribunes. They, a lot of seniors get the Tribune.
But I think that's a good investment for us and our seniors to let them know. You know, a lot of them watch Judge Judy and things like that, maybe some afternoon, you know, TV by, that if you're a senior in Turnbull County,
Right. Yeah, the time clock's a little off.
Does you know you qualify for this, this, and this, you know, you know somebody that can use help? I know it would add work on you immediately with all this new rush of people, but at the same time, that helps us sell the public what we do, so when we go back and ask them to open their wallets a little more, we're not just doing something in an election year or in a levy year, we're already laying the groundwork now, letting people know that here's what we offer, and we wanna take care of you in the best way we can. So, a little more foresighted on that might be a good recipe combination there.
Kinda like what we did with-
Well, we have met with the Tribune, I think it was December, trying to work with them and get schedules coordinated so we can do a monthly or weekly protocol regarding any of the senior levy services.
Oh, nice.
But it's been difficult because you have a change of hands, and, so, I think it's planned for February, I suppose, yeah.
And I know, like, John Parker had an article with Old Farmers, and John Parker had an article with Old Farmers, it was in the paper once a week, and, and people loved it, I mean, the, the guy was like a hero, you know, he threw the county with the seniors because he educated them on these programs that he was, that he came across, and something to fill that void. Some of the seniors, they're into social media somewhat now, and they're looking at their grandkids' posts and things like that. There's, there's ways, I guess what I'm saying is, we do so much good, and if there are people that are falling through the cracks, shame on us because we got the funding, we got those staff, we got a great program. Um, we do have waiting lists on some things, but at the same time, if we want more money, show us that waiting list and we'll provide the money somehow, I mean-
Here's, here's the thing, though, I've, I've seen the, um, articles, and I, they've all been great, don't get me wrong, because they spell out everything. But I don't wanna, it's almost like a bombardment of information that people can't understand. We have to, like, for better, better use, I mean, for lack of a better term, simplify it a little bit more and not talk about the numbers as much, 'cause people get in the weeds with that, and they just don't, don't even know what's going on. Just, you know, simple, these are the programs, uh, an article like that, I think, would be very beneficial to our seniors, 'cause they can't follow all that, you know, this came from senior levy, this is from this, and adult protective this, and they don't know what any of that means.
I was just gonna say, that's a very good point, Commissioner, um, Alex, Steven, Jensen, Bush, just from being at JSF for so long, obviously, we oversaw adult protective services. Um, Kim Burrell is a great person to reach out to, we had multiple, we had actually targeted a, like, a one, like, a one pager, like, A, APS, all of those, Bullet Point, Bullet Point, Bullet Point.
Something, something.
And, um, we put them on pizza boxes, I mean, I know it sounds crazy, but, I mean, we had done all sorts of kind of advertisements, yeah,
Yeah. That's awesome.
Yeah, so we paid for pizza boxes, we had done stuff through, it was a smaller, uh, journal, um, Scope. We have a actual, in the Scope newsletter that comes out every month, APS has a nice little, um, little, yeah, little verbiage in there.
We're in there too.
I mean, I know it sounds silly, but we're trying, I mean, they're trying, huge.
No, no, that's awesome.
It's so good, it's like-
I mean, I hate, I hate, it's up in a sense, but could you imagine a TV commercial where you got, like, Hank Angelo standing with a Frank Fooder, with a someone that they, seriously, people that they've grown up with over the last thirty years, when they were young, they know them, and now they're old with them?
No.
And then seeing that, hey, we're all services. I'm just saying, there are local people here that are dignified in a way that, that people trust over the years.
How you doing today?
I, I'm just saying, I think it would sell.
Yeah.
I think it would sell.
I mean, hey, uh, never say never, right?
Anyway.
Frank would like that.
I'm sure he would, but, but there are probably a lot of seniors retired in our community that, that people have looked up to for many, many, many years,
Frank would love that.
Not saying that, that'd be right, right.
Right?
Maybe someone from the Tribune, maybe somebody, you know, an old newscaster, or somebody that they trust that would get employed a, be a star in our commercial.
I think.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, Mike has something to say.
I'd like to ask him, say to this.
Yes.
If you don't mind.
Only if you wanna be in the commercial.
Okay. Uh, like, so, I'm like, Turnbull County Transit Administrator. Uh, just to add on to what Diane said, we did get, um, the, uh, request came out, or the approvals came out for the funding for, starting July first of two thousand twenty-four, so we did get five hundred and fifty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars starting July twenty twenty-four. It's, that's not on there, but, oh, but, 'cause that's, that's gonna be something separate that Diane will do once we get the contract.
I didn't put it on, because we're already, they're already having something.
But, so, just that's what I have to say. So for this year, we're getting almost nine hundred thousand doll, over nine hundred thousand dollars for ODOT.
That's huge.
That's huge.
I, I mean, when you talk about what we're contributing and what we're getting.
Yeah.
They recog, they recognize, number one, they recognize our system, and they recognize what we're trying to do and what we're trying to build.
Yeah.
And they're willing to work with us, as I said in the past.
And they definitely want to work with us. Yeah, no, I agree with it, that's why I just wanted to say that, so, we'll be coming back to you sometime in May or whatever, is once we get the, I mean, the contract. For that one also.
And that's just for seniors and disabled, right?
It's for seniors and disabled, and the way I would explain it to people, seniors, anybody over sixty, and disabled can be-
Seniors and disabled, yeah.
Anybody.
But, but our disabled population, honestly, didn't know about these rides, and I think the more that this gets out there,
What, what are you looking at me for? What are you looking at me for? See in the commercials, yeah.
Yeah.
And you see the uptick in that, sure, across the board, we're gonna need more rides for now.
Well- No, we're gonna need it, um, application-wise, for seniors, I, I have, when I say I, 'cause I, the database, over twenty-nine hundred applications.
Yeah. What?
Wow. And on the s, uh, disabled side, it's just a couple hundred, but still.
That's, it's gonna grow more than that.
But it's gonna keep growing, because I get calls all the time, oh, we didn't know about your service, thank you very much, they were, they're very appreciative of it, which is great, that's-
Started two thousand nineteen, we didn't even have a page.
Yeah. Yeah. We're good, you're right. Yeah, so, it's really grown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, thanks. Twenty-five. Authorize Danny Moye, President of Board of Turnbull County Commissioners, signing a notice to proceed to MJD Excavating for the PY two thousand twenty-two CDBG Residential Public Infrastructure Grant Program in the American Rescue Plan Act Project One Activity One Heat and Shoot Sanitary Sewer Household Connection located in the Weathersfield Township. Nick Coggins?
Uh, Nick Coggins, Turnbull County Planning Commission, um, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight are actually gonna all be the same thing. The Commissioners have previously awarded contracts, I believe, on January eighteenth, uh, to these four excavating companies that had lowest and best bid. These are all low-income households in the heat and shoot area, uh, which was recently provided with the new sanitary sewer main. This is helping those lower-income families connect to the water sewer main, um, and we're using these funds for the connection. This is just the notice telling them to go start digging based on the contracts that they were awarded respectively between those four items. So you got MJD, Pollard Land Services, TK Excavating, and Express Underground.
Okay. You good with that, Mark?
Yes, very good.
Okay, twenty-nine. Notified Ohio Department Liquor Control, hearing not requested for VD Wine Partners Doubling Is Barrel Thirty-three to JKB Thirty-three LLC and Patio, a little change there. Um, and then Stabones Sports and Gaming LLC, Bull and Bear Neighborhood Grill in Tavern Liberty Township to Deli Cafe Indian Cuisine and Bar, that's a change there. Okay, number thirty. To cause all county buildings to be graded within ninety days, with development of a spreadsheet for each building includes major systems, dates of installation, upgrades, and identification, have required upgrades, repairs, and other applicable information. Um, and then there's a note, I don't see any background information with this, on how they're gonna be graded, who's gonna grade it, um, what the grading system's gonna be, um, it seems like this is lacking, as, to use her words, there's, there's nothing attached with it of anything other than to say, let's do this, but no plan behind it. So, I'd like to see more of a plan to go with it, as far as who, when, where, where it's gonna be maintained, how often, all that stuff.
If it's within ninety days, it won't be somebody from the outside, I know that, you do, I mean, that's gonna take some serious time.
Right, so, this is sort of, yes.
Commissioner, you go hard for Turnbull County Maintenance.
Can you speak to this a little bit, because this, this has been discussed.
We, we do, we do, my guys, I say my guys, HVAC guys, my maintenance gentlemen, um, as far as building, new buildings, upgrade, everything that we've done in this building, Commissioners, Administration Building, is located in your back office spaces. All capital improvements, but the HVAC, the, all the valves that we replaced, the boiler upgrade, they're all back here for public notice, they're used.
That we voted on.
It's all back there, 'cause you approved them all.
Right.
All we do is maintain them, if a valve goes bad, we replace it, if the boiler goes down, we fix it. If we grease our motors and change our belts on a, we, you know, monthly basis, or we see that they're cracking, we, we do our due diligence to keep these buildings up and running as potentially catast, for, to protect a catastrophic incident.
Yeah.
So, courthouse right now is getting renovated, there, everything in there's new. So, to go in there and fix something, again, after they leave, it's maintaining, we grease the motors, we check the belts, we, the units are running.
But as far as a, a running total of all this stuff, I mean, I guess, I guess we vote on, number one, we vote on all these things, you should know that.
Yes. Yes.
And number two, she's asking just for it to be in a different medium, as a spreadsheet?
I- You know, my guys grease on a weekly basis, every bearing and check every belt, they do it on a daily basis, make sure everything's running. You know, I, 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 I don't know, I mean, we change lights when they go bad.
Right, and, and that's what I mean by it's lacking, it's horribly lacking background information on this, it's a general broad thing like saying, hey, let's make every employee healthier and, and make sure they eat a healthier lunch, and, but no background behind how we're gonna get there, what we're gonna do.
But to see that there isn't documentation of all these upgrades and everything we've been doing, there is, number one.
Yeah.
Um, and that's readily available to the public, or Commissioner, or anybody, that they'd like to see it. It's all back here, we approved everything that's been upgraded in these buildings, and so far up to date. As far as what I had said a few meetings ago, and two years ago, when this all came up. And you did grade the buildings before, you've, you've told us what the buildings are, the buildings are older, and then you- A long time ago, yeah, I mean, we maintained them, yeah. I gave, I gave nine one one an F.
Yeah.
One meeting, I stood right there and, and looked at Patty when she was in charge.
Right.
Now, what do you wanna do? I mean, it's not up to me.
Yeah.
We can grade it, but where are you gonna get the money from? They, thank you. That's the big thing. So, when we had to do HVAC install, and I said this in the public meeting one day, I stood at that podium, I said, we had a brand-new system come, gave that system an A, one week later, that brand-new motor blew up from the factory, I, I can't predict it, I can't help that. Is it still an A? I'll give it an A plus now, you know, or A minus now, because it, it's a new motor on a newer system.
Right.
You know, so, I, again, I can't predict when things are gonna break, we just go with it. Prevented it from happening is what we do, we check in, every day, my guys go around every morning, check every building.
Yeah, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, Commissioner, the way this reads, this would include the buildings of my department too. We have probably twenty-five buildings too, and I don't know if other departments are like this or not. This would cause a significant amount of work on our end also.
Again, too, I think, community sources, who is qualified, and please don't take this the wrong way.
Yeah.
I don't, eh, again, when I look at this, who is qualified to really rate a B?
Just to give this a B plus instead of a B.
Right. And what, where is the ranking on, okay, you wanna talk about ranking, let's talk about ranking. What constitutes an A? What constitutes a B?
Right, that's what I'm saying, right, this is, this is so gray, this might have the-
What constitutes? What constitutes? I mean, another thing too, and I, I'll just make this point, again, and I think Commissioner Ken Amelie, you, you said this, what happens if we rank everything an F? Where are we, then what? What, where are we coming up with the millions of dollars?
We know where the problem is, it's just, we try to get the most useful life out of our assets.
Preventative maintenance.
And we try to, and we try, um, everything in our power to keep things running, because we have, I mean, this, this is one thing I wanna say, and it's, it's so easy to put this out there and say, well, why hasn't this been done? Well, it hasn't been done because you haven't, number one, we've been through some difficult economic times in the county.
Absolutely.
We've lost the local government fund, we've lost the MCO sales tax, we've lost the estate tax, we've governed, we've governed through a pandemic. We, we've done all this without raising sales tax either, so when you talk about, well, why aren't these buildings brand-new, why isn't this brand-new? Because we get the most useful life out of our assets, same as somebody does in their house, when they have a hot water tank, oh, it's rated an F. You can get it running still, it's still running, are you gonna replace it when that person's on a fixed income? You're gonna get the most useful life out of that asset, right?
Right, I'm not gonna change my water tank, just because, just because it's old.
You're not gonna change it, right. If it's still running, you're gonna, hey, look, I'm going paycheck to paycheck here, I better get the most out of this that I can, that's what we all do in our homes, right? You're gonna replace something that's running?
And we have a department, I mean, we just, we just went over the vehicles, are those guys maintaining, they change the oil, they get a system for all of our vehicles in the county. You've got a maintenance department with an HVAC guy, or a team, that they, they know which buildings, the HVAC's new, they know which ones are old, they know which ones need more maintenance than others, so as far as grading the rest of it, I mean, looking at all, all those types of things, who, what, when, where, and why on this thing is, I can ask the question of, of, there's a proposal, yeah, that would be great, if we have to create another department that's just building maintenance inspection or something, but, but we need more data, more funding, more everything than just a blanket statement on here that, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna rate stuff. I mean, that's something, I mean, you're talking everything from electrical, to roofing, to-
Plumbing.
Uh, it, it, it might be, it might be the carpeting, it might be the paint, it might be, you know, expenses, lead paints, whatever things that-
Wall plumbing. Right, absolutely. Structural, it could be structural, and-
And, and again, the language is so, uh, can you-
It sounds good, it sounds good, but there's, there's no meat in it.
Well, well, it actually doesn't, preventative maintenance can only occur with graded buildings and proper record-keeping. No, that's not true, I'm sorry, that's not true.
No.
That's why you have maintenance directors. But like, I mean, yes, will it help? Yes, but, but again, you're talking in these ultimatums, like, that's what I don't like. Our elevator improvement, which hopefully will be done in April, for both elevators, not the motor upstairs, it's electronics.
Right.
The electronics were done in nineteen eighty-two, the motor up there driving those are nineteen sixty-three. So the motors are great, it's electronics that's failing, we can't control the electronics.
But, but if we rated things, you saw it's nineteen sixty-two, we might have been saying, we need a new motor for that elevator five years ago, and we'd be putting funding toward that, and not doing the up, the electrical, and I mean, if it's working-
It's fine.
It's, I mean, what do you do? Do we not put windows in courthouse and get a new elevator thing to go?
If it goes down, we- Now, I do have, I do have preventative stuff in place already for some other items. I have spare motors on the shelf sitting, just because, you know, lack of emergencies, you know, we have, I do have things out there. It's, it's good to go, I mean, I'm trying to do the best I can with the dollars I want to work with, and I don't wanna overspend.
And if things do need upgrading, please bring them to our attention.
And we come, yeah, I do, I come right to the table, you know, I need it, I, I only ask if I do.
And tell, tell us exactly which funds you're gonna take them from, too.
And there are things, yeah, we had some things happen, we had some roofs caved in, this and that, but we also have people that work in some of those buildings that see it each and every single day. They could have alerted or could have said, hey, this is looking bad, come to a meeting and said, you need to get over there and get some eyeballs on this because this doesn't look too safe anymore, and lack of doing that, I mean, that's a, you know-
Well, and, and to go back with the auditor yoder's approval of the funding for our loans, the highway engineer's office, I can't wait. Those windows are so deplorable, the, the gaps between them are, are three-eighths plywood with a metal finish on either side that's rotted. You could see through them all. So, yeah, I've been trying to get this done for three years now, and finally, we're gonna get it to happen, so moving forward.
Good. So I, I guess enough of that, she's brought it up ten times since I've been here, but again, there's no, it's just a blanket gray statement, there's no plan behind it. If, if I, I need to see some background paperwork, how it's gonna be rated, who's gonna rate it, when they're gonna rate it, what the cost to it's gonna be to go along with it. Before I would just vote and say, yep, we gotta do this with no price tag. Okay, thirty-one, thirty-two, executive session regarding sanitary engineers, thirty-three, thirty-four, I assume that's a separate-
What, what, I don't know what that's about.
Executive session?
Or, obviously, we're not gonna talk about it, but, can I talk to you private about it, 'cause I have no idea.
Well, one, one is a settlement on a, um, on a debt that was owed to us, uh, your approval before we go forward.
Okay.
Remember, we put Matt in charge of-
Oh, yes.
Uh, of collections, although, that's what the first-
I didn't get my emails there for a little while with IT, that's why I didn't, I missed out on that.
Yeah. Okay. All right, and the second one is a class action lawsuit that we wanted to discuss with you. Okay, and Phil, I was wondering, do we have to go in and come back out, go in, come back out?
Yes.
We traditionally put it on that way just to make clear that there are two independent matters.
Okay, all right, okay. Are there gonna be decisions made in that meeting that need to be on the agenda afterward for us to? No, we would wait till the following week.
Okay.
Okay, that concludes our regular agenda. Um, anyone have anything from the floor? Brian, you sat here patiently, anything, any input that you have on anything?
I agree with you guys on the building maintenance stream, I mean-
Thank you.
Sure does, she brings it to our attention.
Had a bunch of money in the coffers, it would be one thing.
Have you, you had a bunch of money and-
Right, right.
You have a bunch of money and a bunch of qualified, you know, guys in every field.
Exactly, exactly. We're, we're all, I mean, no different, we gotta, we gotta act like it's our money and it's, like, it's our house, basically.
I mean, that elevator, that elevator is a prime example. We would've got a new elevator in nineteen eighty-two because you would've said, oh, this elevator's twenty years old, we gotta get a new one.
Yeah, and then, but how far would that affect you beyond, because you could've got more useful life out of this one.
It's, it's the electronics more so than the hard equipment, you know.
Right, thank you, Brian.
Thanks for your input today, too, Brian, earlier, too.
Yeah, no problem.
Bob Marano adds something for us. Thank you.
Um, Commissioners, this is-
We've been kinda quiet the last couple of weeks, well, have you been in the penalty bars?
Well, no, we, we haven't been, Allison, Allison and I talk every day.
He's not quiet.
No, we, no financial transactions, and we haven't had to do any hiring, firing, or anything, so.
Wait, he's not coming back?
Mr. Chiccolo, no, he's not.
I'm saying, I'm not, but he's-
No, Bill, I've been getting into-
I know, right? Poor guy.
Mr. Danzo, I have one thing, so if you can hang for just through this, I got one question for you.
Um, our current Water Superintendent told us, told management, um, recently that he plans on retiring in the beginning of twenty-twenty-five. Um, we have no succession planning, and he's a very integral part of our management, and his knowledge of our water distribution system is top-notch, I, I mean, from maintenance to EPA regulations to where valves are when we have valves. Um, and so what Gary and I even looped Alice into it, what we would like to do is post a job for an Assistant Superintendent, um, with the intention of just training this person for, we'll say, the next year. But the reality is, it'll probably take us a few months to onboard somebody with the qualifications that we need. Um, so I'm basically here asking for permission to post this job.
This is a completely new position.
It, it would be a new position, um, there would be no intent to, I wanna say, backfill this position. We would just have a superintendent, but this will be a training position, so once he retires, if we deem it reasonable, this person would move into the superintendent role.
Who's doing this person's job when he's not there?
He's on the phone a lot.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I would say.
No, but I mean, who's doing it when he's not there?
Well, in, in theory, it would be, the chief operator would be doing it, but-
Tom?
Tom Aldert, yeah.
Yeah.
But the current superintendent, um, I mean, we were dealing with an issue that happened over the Martin Luther King, uh, weekend, and the superintendent took phone calls all weekend. I, I mean, it's more of a twenty-four, seven, I, I mean, it's dealing with our drinking water.
Um, one thing that you might wanna note, too, Bob, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but it does require that this person, we, is an engineer.
Yes.
Um, so this is something that's very important to note, this is not your average, um, and I hate to say that, but this is not your average, run-of-the-mill. This person is required to be an engineer. Uh, that is hard to find at a Patriot tent. Um, so again, uh, they require, this is somebody who's monitoring our, our water, um, there's gonna be something that I'm sending to you, Commissioners, soon about what happened on that January weekend. I never understood the magnitude, I mean, I really got to understand what they do and how they do it. They are the ones checking our waters for water quality, they are the ones called when there's a high-low, when water tanks overflow, God forbid. There's so many things that I saw that this gentleman did that I immediately said to myself, when he told me he was gonna retire, he told me when I was sitting there, I said, whoa, 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 have you, who, who, what do you do?
Yeah.
You know, um, so, and that kinda does also, I hate to touch it back to Bill, but same thing about this building grading stuff. I think it's more just about, to me, have we, do we have somebody as a backup? If Bill were to disappear, does somebody know where we're at with the status of the building? If, you know, Mr. Ron Watson retires tomorrow, if Bill retires tomorrow, I think when I look at it, it's more of, are we success, are we planning for succession for people? That's more so what I worry about from an HR perspective.
Well, and, and here's where we run into an, an issue, because I'm all for that, and I'm all for upward mobility in, in a, any successful organization. But you have one person that says, no, you, you shouldn't have that.
I know.
You should go out to the outside. Look, who, when somebody's not doing Lisa's job, that person that fills in for it should have, you know,
Absolutely, they should be somewhat, yes, absolutely.
Some, some equity in that job, I mean, because, you'd have demoralized individuals in this.
Absolutely. Why would anybody wanna stay with this county?
Exactly.
If there's no forward movement, now, this is a job that we are gonna be posting outside, to be fair. However, I do, I mean, that is something that I totally would advocate for.
But you, but you get hit with, well, that's just a political hire, that's just somebody, it's not true, it's not true.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's not true.
This person has been doing the job, they've shown they can do the job.
And most of it's-
And the private sector, it's like that everywhere.
Everywhere.
Exactly.
If you shadow whoever's job you're going after, and you get that street cred, you get that experience to be able to do that.
Experience, yeah.
And not experienced doing the job, an engineer's an engineer, but an engineer in the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department
Is different.
is totally different than an engineer in a private sector somewhere else that doesn't deal with that everything.
Because you know, you know, it ends up, you know, it ends up happening, the person that was doing the job is having to train that new person to do the job that she already, she or he already knows.
That's not fair, that's not.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm, I am one-hundred percent in favor of successional employment within the county.
Of course.
Whether it be in Bill's department, someone stepping up, whether it be in the prosecutor's office, somebody stepping up to different job duties to bring, to think we can bring someone in from the outside for every position.
To know that.
And understand a career of county government in this county is absurd. There are entry-level positions you get into to work up. The other thing is, with morale and pride in job, is you need to know that if you do your job good, you can always move up the ladder. Everybody wants that. Anybody that's in a job with a cutoff and they know, I can never be the boss, that's probably not your most productive, healthiest, happiest worker.
Exactly.
If he knows that he's termed out and limited, his only option is to leave and go elsewhere. He's gonna start looking to go elsewhere, he or she is gonna start looking to go elsewhere sometime in their career. We just did this with nine-one-one. We had people, it's like, we go nowhere. Now we have a successional thing. You could be a supervisor, from supervisor, you could work your way up to assistant director. From that, you get the experience, you may be director someday, and it should be that way in every form of government that we do, where there are positions out there that can be plugged in from the outside, but there are some, you need the sweat equity and the street cred to actually do the job with somebody to learn how to do it. To, to imagine somebody, Bill all of a sudden sends us a, a resignation, he moves off to some Caribbean island, and something goes down, Bill knows where that part is on the shelf.
Right.
Bill knows where he bought that last valve, and which one was replaced and which one wasn't.
Right.
Any new guy in the world isn't gonna know that stuff. Now, this doesn't fall back into what she's saying, there is a record somewhere.
Oh.
But there isn't a Bible that he writes of everything that, here's what I do for a living, here's my journal, go back and read eighteen years' worth of notes that I took to figure out what to do. That's never gonna happen in a job. So, successional, we need to start thinking that way in every department.
Yeah.
Agreed.
With this here, Bob, I commend you for that because, yeah, this is our, this is our water, this is our drinking water, this is, this is the health of a community. And I don't want, you know, especially, we're gonna bring an engineer from the outside for fifty grand, probably wasn't at the top of his class if he's got any experience, or he's probably a new guy in some way, shape, or form, that, that, do I want him monkeying with our water system? Or I want a guy who's been behind a guy for twelve years and knows what valves to open at any time?
And, and that's, with, with his retirement, we're losing a lot of expertise.
We really are.
And, and it's, the hope is we can find somebody, and, and, I mean, realistically, if we had someone here six months, that's probably not enough time, but we'll, we'll make it do.
I mean, I sat with this gentleman for what, an hour, I would say, and I, again, I, this is just, this is just, I wanna speak to the employees that we have in this county. The magnitude of knowledge that this gentleman and, and the service that these people do for us, again, this is our water. I don't think sometimes we even, not you guys here, I just mean in general, I hope the public hears that people are out there working extremely hard in this county, and they are educated and more than qualified, and we should be commending them for what they're doing. I mean, this guy amazed me with how much he knew about everything, and Gary, they all amazed me, all these department heads.
I, uh, not to, not to, uh, cut you off, but, uh, when I first started, talked to Gary, and he made it really clear. He said, you know, this department, everybody just takes for granted, everybody that flushes the toilet, just, hey, it goes somewhere, I don't know where.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a lot that goes into that, unfortunately, and if you go to those plants and you go to their treatment plants and all that, oh my gosh, this is a multi-million dollar operation that our health and safety rely, that we, that you take care of so many individuals and so many businesses in this community, it's sick. So, um, anyway, that's up to you.
I always burst into that when I flush the toilet.
I always think of that. So you remind me of that.
I guess, does that mean I'd be okay? You can keep that.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
I'm okay contacting Alice to get it posted and go from there.
Okay, Bill Danzo, question for you. Tonight is a meeting that the Commissioners have been invited to, it's a public meeting that's been, been, uh, notified in the newspaper, uh, and with Warren Township and the group that wants to, uh, save the dam per se in, in Warren Township. Uh, we've been invited to come and learn the facts. Um, one Commissioner sent some emails around yesterday that said, uh, she will not be attending, and if Maureen and I attend, she will be taping it and suing us for violating Sunshine Law if two Commissioners, Mr. Commissioner Canales, myself, were to attend this meeting in Warren Township. What are your thoughts on that to keep us legal? It's a public meeting, it's an educational meeting, there's no other way for us to learn. If they came to me on one-on-one, or they came to him one-on-one, she would say it's round-robin. Um, so this is a public meeting we wanna go to. What stipulations or guidelines would you give us publicly to attend a meeting? And are there any do's or do-nots that you would advise, uh, any of the Commissioners when they go to a public meeting like this to abide by?
Well, I think the, the problem that we have here is this is a, a classic situation where we've got, represent the two of you as Commissioners, and we represent the third Commissioner who is saying that, that she believes it to be improper. Uh, I, my recommendation to you would be to ca- talk to Attorney Conover, who's been appointed for situations where there are, uh, conflict-style disputes among the Commissioners themselves. I know that's, I, I know that's an extra layer, but it, it's sort of, it's one that we've had to put in place because our office is statutory counsel for all of you guys. Um, and, and it's, it's one where, because of that, if there were to be, there's already been an allegation, if there were to be a lawsuit, he would be the one that would be representing you two Commissioners, so that would be the, that would be the appropriate court.
I have spoke to Ashville County Commissioners and Mahoney County, they just attended a informational session on solar panels a couple nights ago, where all three were in attendance, and they said, if you're there for informational purposes, you don't vote, you don't express, here's how I'm gonna handle this, here's how I'm voting, and you were there for information, they had no problem with that, so I called CCao, they said, absolutely, that's part of your job, is to attend meetings, and if you attend one, two, three of you together, that's fine, as long as you're not voting on the issues and you're not expressing your opinion to, to sway a vote during that time. Um, that's part of your job of what you do.
I think we're misunderstanding what Sunshine Law is, and this is a public meeting where the Commissioners can discuss anything in the public. It's when you do it that's not public that you get in trouble.
That's incorrect. It's gotta be a properly noticed meeting from the Board of Commissioners. It was not noticed by the Board of Commissioners, be it from our public meeting as a special meeting, we would be attending someone else's notice meeting, and it can only be-
But it's publicly noted.
That's what you're misunderstanding. We didn't public, we didn't publicly notice it as our Commissioners meeting, which has to be done as a special meeting from our regular meeting.
Right, but we can go for information, educational purposes, and not for taking their meeting.
If you go for it, if you go for information, it can be information only, meaning, so if you say something, and I know you have a, I, you have a hard time maybe not expressing yourself at things, and you might say, you know, well, it's my opinion that we should do this, this, or this. That is discussion leading towards a decision taken outside of one of our properly noted special meetings. Now, if I'm wrong, correct me.
I'd love, I'd love to. There's nothing, there's no, there's nothing that's happening in a public meeting where you can't discuss something. We're discussing it openly, the press is there, everyone is there.
You are not allowed to discuss it openly. You are treading on extremely thin ice if you were to do that.
But you're not an attorney, but you're not an attorney, you're telling me something, I'm so, I'm telling you, I just agree.
I don't care if I'm not an attorney. I understand the concept of Sunshine and open meetings, that's why I take it for-
Well, I feel, I respectfully disagree because I think I'm, I'm right, honestly.
And CCao told me, yeah, you go to that, Commissioners go to meetings together every single day, everywhere in the state of Ohio.
Information means that you're there to obtain information, but if you discuss something that leads to-
What about if you ask questions?
Yeah, I have to ask questions for information, that's a lot.
If you're asking information, if you're asking a clarifying question of the people from whom you're obtaining information, that's perfectly fine. But if you are engaging in discussion that leads to making a decision, that is not okay. So if you say to the group of people, I'm not-
So when you went to the, you went to the meeting that the Corps of Engineers had, and you were there on Zoom, and you were talking about, I was in the meeting, informational, with the Corps of Engineers people, with the ODOT people, with sanitary engineers, you were talking about, I'm gonna do this, I'll go ahead and look this up, I'll do that, that was technically illegal because you were talking about moves the Commissioner was gonna make while I sat there in the crowd and didn't say anything.
No.
Fine, I understand.
Why, why, what's different with that? When you said, I'll bring it up at the next meeting, we'll bring this up to a vote, we need to vote on this, we're gonna do this.
They asked, they, they, there was information, they wanted to find out the process and the procedure for getting something on our agenda. Explaining something, information is information, but none of what was discussed is information leading to a decision. And that's where I think that this is over your head.
We voted, we voted on the fifty-year plan after that, which was a decision.
Any discussion leading to making a decision. If you don't understand that, talk to an attorney.
Which, I, I mean, I feel comfortable from talking to the Ashville Commissioners, Mahoney Commissioners, and CCao, that us attending a meeting, an informational meeting of which we're a part to be part of the discussion, and to-
Not to be part of the discussion.
Why, why couldn't we be?
So at, at any public meeting, we shouldn't be a part of any discussion?
If it is your, if it is your meeting and it's part of-
Say we go to a-
How did you guys, how did you guys go to Colbert Lake? And there were questions, the rest of you, and you asked questions of the panel, you asked questions of the engineer, and, and Maureen had asked questions.
And we did, we were in the back, but there was no, there was nothing that led to any decision. There is nothing discussed.
Everything there was-
So if we vote on Colbert Lake, that didn't lead to the- So if we vote on Colbert Lake, that didn't lead to a decision from that day? If we end up devoting whether to apply funds to them or not?
I can't interpret language.
So if we, if we, all three of us went to a trustees meeting, and we sat there, a Warren City Council meeting, and we talked about issues.
Fiber optic meeting, whatever.
As they're having with, with trustees, that's an illegal meeting? I don't understand.
I can't make you understand, Mara.
No, I'm saying, if all three of us are in a trustees meeting, we have to sit there silently and not discuss anything with trustees?
Nothing that relates, nothing that leads to, it has been given to us by Bill Danzo and his office, and, and since I've been here, it has been written. And, and, and that is the, that is the test for that. You can engage in no discussion leading to.
Nothing will ever get done.
Nor, nor can you.
So are you attending the meeting tonight?
Nor, nor are.
Are you attending the meeting tonight?
Nor are you able to say, I, like, I, I walked in the other week, whenever we adjourned a meeting. Someone asked a question after the meeting adjourned, and they said, so is it the board's intention to do this? And Denny, after the meeting had adjourned, you said, I, I wanna reiterate what I just said in the meeting.
Right.
It doesn't matter. That's a civil violation because the meeting is adjourned. You guys have no contact.
No, I said I stood by my statement I made during the meeting.
At the Colbert Lake meeting.
But you cannot say that. What you should stop, what you should.
So I can't give an interview to the paper and him quote me either?
But she gives an interview to the, to the press after the Colbert Lake meeting.
You should say, you should say after the meeting to a constituent, our meeting.
And I sat there and listened to it.
Our meeting just adjourned.
And my statements are on the record from the meeting.
Right, but not to, not to reengage in a discussion with two of the commissioners and a member of the public about what your intentions are.
No, I, I didn't, and what I stated at that point was.
But you're gonna end up learning in court, and I wish it was capable, you were capable of understanding, and you didn't have to go there.
So if I could just say one thing, the Colbert Lake meeting, I was there when you were getting interviewed by the press and you were talking about Colbert Lake. That's a violation. Right?
I'm not here to, I'm trying to help.
No, it never rests in a meeting.
I'm trying to help my board to do what's right. It's unfortunate that you don't get it and you'd rather.
But why are you not trying to help the taxpayers utilize the board as their mou- their mouthpiece to do progress for the county?
You're worrying about the endowment instead of trying to progress things forward. I mean, you're finding every way to not, particularly.
And, and you stated in here, you're not coming to the meeting. You stated in an email yesterday, why can't you come and not open your mouth then? If Mauro and I start talking, that's on us, but you can't come and absorb from the public what they want you to say and keep your mouth shut? I mean, we could all attend, and if none of us say anything, just because someone reaches out to us.
Right, right, is, is your, is you, are you saying right now that you're going to go and not say anything that would lead to, to the discussion?
I'm gonna go, and I have not been educated on this issue at all, and as a commissioner, it would be remorse for me to vote anyway until I get all the facts.
But if you have, if you have questions.
I need to ask questions. I need to understand the past.
You should, what I suggest is to board of commissioners, this is my, my suggestion, you and I went to the same meeting last year. We understand what's going on. We, if he, he doesn't.
But we have the parks board coming.
No, they're not.
Yes, they are.
Yeah, they are. John Brown called. He's coming today. He called me yesterday and said I will be in attendance.
The correspondent said that no one was coming.
I know that. He called yesterday and said, after consulting with his attorney, he will be in attendance representing the board, and he will be there to answer questions on behalf of the board and Zach.
So do we not go?
And then Zach was just here. He said he's not coming. We asked him to please come because we want him there to hear what he has to say so we can be educated the same way.
Is that going too?
He said, uh, we asked him. He said he had plans, but he would look into changing his plans. He just said that an hour ago. So.
How does that make a difference anyway? I mean, it's, it doesn't.
Why would we not want him there?
No, but I mean, how does that make a difference for sunshine law, whether they're there or not for us? It doesn't make a difference. So now you're debating on going. It wouldn't make a difference.
And what's the difference if you, yeah, if you're watching and that leads to a decision and you make a decision based on what you saw, or if you were sitting there in person absorbing the information and asking the questions to clarify questions in your head? We're not going there to say, hey, let's vote this way, or I think I'm gonna vote this way next week, or up.
This is circular.
I mean, that's, not the case.
I propose an IQ test.
Pardon me?
An IQ test.
She wants to propose an IQ test for us. Take you down any day on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will too, by the way.
Okay.
You act sometimes like you're worth a bunch of dummies. There, we are college graduates, you know, that I graduated with honors at the same time too, and I have National Honor Society, you know, and I didn't get the degree you got, but I was in a different direction. No big deal. We're all college-educated people here.
Have to be able to understand things, or to do things properly, and if you lack that cap- capacity, you're demanding.
We, we, we have an attorney that did the training for the sunshine law stuff advising us, and you think you know more than him?
And you won't even hear.
He's the one that trained you when you took your sunshine law training. When you did it online, our attorney's the one that told you how to do it, and you're questioning that? Makes no sense.
I think there's a, there's a whole list of violations. People have a private meeting after the meeting adjourned, uh, weeks ago out here.
I'm still figuring, trying to figure out how you call a snow day in the county. There's an emergency without twenty-four-hour notice. I, I have no idea how you do that.
Sure.
How, how are you sending this to us? How are you sending this email to us?
It would be, it would be, and it would be, uh, an emergency meeting, an emergency meeting. You make every effort to notify the media, so you, and then you hold the meeting.
Okay. Here's what, here's what, so.
At four in the morning, it's sounding like hell outside.
Wait, 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 wait. Wait, hold on.
Then you, and you leave.
I, so this is a violation you sent to us. It's the same issue as Mauro and I learned about last year. Mauro and Denny will likely go and discuss things leading to making a decision or express their opinion, which also leads to decision making. You CC'd us on it.
Oh, I replied, I replied to Amy.
You shouldn't be talking about this with us.
I replied to Amy. I didn't say anything in the.
You CC'd us.
Okay.
You shouldn't have those conversations with us. Who should be going? Who should be discussing? That's a sunshine law violation, and it's strict in sense.
See, I would disagree with that though too, because it's administrative stuff that we're making administrative.
We could go round and round on this, is my opinion.
If, if I'm making my schedule together and say, Mauro, are you going to this meeting tomorrow night, or commissioner, are you going to this meeting? That's not a violation for me to talk to you about, are you attending somewhere or not, to make an administrative decision within the office.
It's just crazy. And, and how is it improperly noticed?
Does he not understand that we didn't notice it?
I understand that, but they improperly noticed it or we didn't notice it?
If you want to participate in discussion, then the board of commissioners has to know that it's from our meeting, where it's going to be, the time, place, nature, location.
Here's, here's my thing. If I have questions, I can ask questions.
Hey, you didn't have a public notice.
I, I mean, honestly, I'm asking.
No, asking questions aside.
Okay, that's what I'm telling you.
It's a discussion leading to us making a decision.
That is discussion, asking questions.
Say, say he says, you know what, we might just decide not to give them this much funding this time. If he says that at that meeting, that's a violation because that would lead to our budget being done outside of our own properly noticed meeting.
First of all, that is, there's no.
Does it make sense? Do you get it?
But, but it makes sense, but there's no vote taken.
It doesn't matter. It's discussion that leads to an opinion taken outside of a pub, uh, discussion that leads to a decision taken outside of a properly noticed public meeting.
I feel comfortable with my actions tonight. Hopefully you do too, and I would, hopefully you would be there too.
It's no different than her there before. She wa- she attended this meeting before.
And I wish she would attend tonight for the public's benefit. People in Warren Township, people along the river deserve that.
So was that a violation? You talked to the media after.
Nothing, nothing other than clarifying questions, but, or procedural, but nothing that it, that would relate to us making a decision. No discussion that leads to or taking action. It could.
Well, then you're guilty of that all the time, all the time.
Okay.
Because you've talked to the press about things that we haven't voted on yet. On all, on all.
I mean, Colbert Lake in itself, I watched the interviews. I watched it on TV, and I was almost like, no, don't say that. We're not doing that. You know, we're not, we're not, we never publicly stated we're gonna.
Right. You talked about what the. And we never voted on it then?
On a private thing, or we're gonna do a resolution of some sort. I mean, that.
Anyway.
I don't.
No one's gonna change their mind.
I, I, I don't think we need to. I don't think I need to do chicken shit stuff like that back and forth. We're trying to move forward as a board.
No.
Correct actions, cr- um, my effort is to correct.
There's been no action taken.
My action is, my effort is to correct decades of wrong.
And, and I, and I, I.
That is by the board relative to sunshine and open meeting law violations.
And, and you and Brian Ames will make a hell of a team for the next couple of years. You go to every community because every community does it differently.
What did you, what did she do? The first days you were here, she came in your office and tried to tell you how to vote. I heard it. That's a sunshine law violation.
Okay.
Please. I don't know. I, I thought we were all on team Trumbull County, trying to move the county forward.
Okay, all right.
But again, I wish you would be there tonight for the benefit of the people of Trumbull County.
Gooder, better Trumbull County news?
Go ahead. Yes.
We have somewhat of a design, somewhat of a design plan for downtown. Um, we met last week. Uh, Commissioner Canales couldn't make it, but we went through some things. Uh, took some things out, moved some things. Uh, I have a legal coming from, uh, Premier Bank to get this section taken out of their property for animal welfare league. So once they get that back, we get the assessments done, get the easements all taken care of, and then we can move forward with actually breaking ground on the dock.
I have a question too.
I got a question.
Wait, how did, how did Mr. Wilson meet with us here and then go privately in our office and meet with her outside of the public and not not be round robbing?
Well, then we must be having illegal meetings here, and our prosecutor's here with us.
Looks pretty illegal. Appreciate it.
I mean, it doesn't, when do you stop? We're talking county business here. Prosecutor's here. We must be having illegal meetings here.
Right.
I also have, we are, uh, we're looking at the Health Department for the Corners Office, so we have some ideas out there, thrown out there, and
Great.
we're looking at something for the morgue and the Corners Office at the old Chestnut.
Also, uh.
And the commissioner, I would ask you, when you get a moment.
Yeah.
Um, swing by the new Health Department.
I will do that.
It's awesome. I went to the grand opening, and it's absolutely awesome. The workspace is top-notch. I mean, if I'm a county employee, they got the best digs in the whole county, and I would be very happy to go to work every single day in their, their new building that they're in. They did a fantastic job with it, from the layout to the design to the structure and the, the public accessibility, everything from women that want, uh, car seats in the back, they come right up to their own door, right there, uh, under an overhang in case it's raining, where they can install car seats for you. They planned everything out meticulously, and I, I can't believe they did this all in less than a year from, from the phone call from the realtor to them being open now. It's, it's just amazing.
So, awesome. I will definitely stop by. Um, before I forget too, um, I was approached by, uh, the business manager at, uh, Warren City Schools. I wanna make this public about, um, Panther, uh, about our, uh, vehicle maintenance. So, uh, as everyone knows, they're gonna be expanding. They're gonna be building that rec center. It's already, Shelby, it's already up. So it's an enormous, uh, facility, uh, right there, and, and they wanna inquire about the property on Panther and if we'd be interested in, uh, assisting them because they're having parking, they're gonna need different things. Uh, I will say that Panther has been an eyesore for a long time, just because right on the main thoroughfare there. I think the school would do a good job with it. We just have to relocate, uh, where we're at right now, which would be possible, but, uh, again, this was just asked of me, uh, so I'm relaying it in a public meeting. Um, not saying yes or no to do it, but.
So you're thinking us getting rid of Panther to the schools and then us finding a new place for vehicle maintenance?
Yes, for vehicle maintenance. Number one, I, and, and let me just say, number one, uh, I think that they, you know, as a part of their complex that they're building, it'll look a heck of a lot better too, and it's on that main thoroughfare.
And there, there are some old auto body shops, some old auto mechanic places that are accessible, that are more fitting for vehicle maintenance.
Oh, yeah.
And not on the entire place and in the.
That are not right by the school, you're, right.
I mean, it would be if they're relocating employees, but if they're not onsite anyway.
Look, can, can we look into some properties maybe through the land bank and?
I am. I am.
Okay.
I, there's two acres next to Family Dollar that's free.
Okay.
Um, it's right next to, we've got Family Dollar and Clavin Ford's Garage right next door over there. It's vacant. It's, it's in the land bank.
I mean, anything we can do to help the schools, they're gonna beautify that, that portion of the land, obviously, and that rec center's gonna be, if you guys haven't seen that yet, go look at the Shelby. It's enormous, number one.
Yeah, it's huge.
It's gonna be, um, it's gonna be a great thing for the city of Warren and Warren City Schools, so maybe that's something we can look into.
A dumb question, but what do you do about, because our gas is.
Well, here's the thing is.
We'd have to start all over again.
We, we did the underground storage tanks. We did, not, not the gas, not the gas tanks, but, but a lot of the other stuff has been remediated in the past.
Yeah, the other guy. Yeah, okay.
But the gas tanks would be the only thing.
The upgrade of electronics is good. They just have to dig a hole for the tank, and to get it all, again, through Buster, through the state of Ohio.
Right, through the state of Ohio.
Yeah, everything needs to be inspected, just as you're starting all over again, so.
Right.
Right.
And there's gonna be a whole program there, even if Warren Schools took it over as far as remediation of the site there.
Oh, yeah.
That would have, have.
Toxic site or whatever that they would have to, and get environmental company.
Oh, but, and I think that if a school's taking that over with the intent of beautifying, I'm sure there's grant supports.
They'll do that.
Like I said, there's gotta be an old gas station or an old something around somewhere that would be a perfect fit for, for more mating, I should say, than what they have there in Panther right now.
Oh, yeah.
I'm looking. I'm looking.
Okay. We know that we need some, need some property too. I mean, it's gonna be larger.
They, yeah.
And speaking of that, in a sense then, once again, we gotta address this parking. It, it, some clock's ticking going by. We need to figure out, we gotta do a request for bids or requests for parking or whatever we have to do legally. Uh, Bill, we have, uh, the gentleman behind us that wants to lease us the lot. Gentleman across the street wants to lease us the lot. Um, they're giving us first dibs before they put their own parking attendant up and, and charge people on day rate. Um, and it's been told to us that we need to put out some type of request that we're looking for parking and let them bid on it that way. Um, can we get this process moving somehow, or what do you recommend that we do to get it going before they lease it to somebody else and we miss out on the deal?
Yeah, there is, there is a, uh, there is a specific process for the lease of property for board of commissioners, and if you guys are interested in doing that, we can certainly help get your point in the right direction for it.
Can we initiate that in the best way we can? Let me know whatever we can do or lease, uh, whatever we need to, however we need to word it, because we do have two different bids. Of course, they'll be different priced. One is for one year. The gentleman threw out twenty dollars per spot per month, and then the other one, the guy started at fifty, but that's something we can negotiate if we take it for a five-year term. So these are things that they threw out at us, at me, but we can't do anything about it until we have the official. You know, there may be other people that own properties around us that wanna bid on that opportunity also, so I wanna make sure that we do everything legal that wise. Um, but the clock is ticking. They both notified us that if we don't do something soon, they're gonna look at other means, and we may not have the option very much longer. So, Bill, you wanna initiate that with the prosecutor's office a little bit? You wanna be in charge of that?
Sure.
I, I think, I think. We work together sometimes a little bit, so I, you know, if you're in charge, I think we could help him out.
We, uh, we, um, and I think we need to start with, what, what's your plan on, how long would you wanna lease for? I mean, yeah, one's one, one's another, but the ultimate plan is, do you wanna put out for an RFQ or RFP for a five-year lease? This many spaces at what cost to the county?
That needs to be hushed out.
And that's where I think the ultimate.
That's where we need to see what, how open-ended we can be on that. Is there wiggle room? Is there negotiation room? Uh, can we just put out that we're looking for bids and then entertain the best bid, or, or the best couple bids, or how do we do that legally is what we need to figure out?
Yeah, we can discuss that.
Okay.
Okay. And then Nick, we have a TID meeting at two?
Yes.
Still?
Yes.
Okay, anyone else have anything for the greater good? Yes, Mike?
I just, I got something from the WRTA staff. The six routes will start downtown here in March eleventh.
Awesome.
Monday, March eleventh.
That's two rounds.
Sooner than we thought.
In, in addition to the Warren Express.
Addition to the Warren Express. So the way that will work is, the first route starts at six-thirty, it goes out to Walmart.
That's huge for people, yeah.
Yeah, so the second, and then it comes back to downtown at seven o'clock. The bus, the, uh, it's just one bus. The bus switches over, and it goes off to Plaza, goes off.
What day is, what day is March eleventh?
Monday.
You wanna ride a bus March eleventh, Mauro?
Do it, do it. I rode it before.
Seriously, let's jump on that first bus and do a media thing that the route is open.
I can't, I can't. I would, but I can't. I'm not gonna be in town that day.
Or Mauro and I are allowed to ride a bus together.
Will Dean be there if we, uh, do that?
And can we share our lunches?
Apologies, I can't. I've got a. Can you arrange for Dean to be there as well? That's, that's, Denny can talk to him as well. I can, I'll see if Dean can be there.
Yeah. Let's do that. We'll take a bus ride. We'll go to lunch with Dean, and we will bury the hatchet.
Right, you wanna, you wanna come with us?
Yeah.
And publicize that.
Oh, this is a great.
We have two new routes for the sport, for the red light.
There's a good commercial to start.
Had no cost to the taxpayers, right?
That's a start of a good.
Woo-hoo. That's a commercial right there, Danny.
You wanna jump on the bus, Rosa?
I won't, I won't.
Rosa.
So do you wanna, you wanna?
Nobody puts Alex on the back of the bus.
You wanna do it at six-thirty in the morning, and you wanna do it later in the day? What time you wanna do it?
I, it's my.
I'll, I'll find, I'll find out.
Find out what the routes are, and then we'll.
Six thirty, who's, who's riding at six-thirty in the morning?
The same two people that are gonna ride at four, but that's outside.
Right.
I mean, at six-thirty, if they're gonna start, when are they going at six-thirty?
The thing is, it starts at six-thirty, it goes out to Walmart.
Walmart, Walmart.
Seven three shift.
Yeah, they work seven, yeah.
And it comes back in.
If you work a seven three shift, you need to leave at six-thirty to be on time for work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, exactly.
We'll ride it. We'll take the one bus, ride it back, take the other route, ride it back, and.
Eight-thirty.
Go to lunch with Dean.
Yeah, there's a lot.
We'll invite all three commissioners and the media.
And then.
So, the other, the other, the other route goes out to, uh, the VA Hospital that I was dropped, uh, uh, Trumbull Plaza.
Hey, can some, can somebody from ODOT come out? Can Chuck Tyre?
I, I'd like to have that.
If he wants to, the, we press there.
Yeah.
You can ask him.
Okay, I'll, I'll.
ODOT, that'd be nice for Raymond to interview him as well.
Right, no, I'll, I'll be holding the D to see what time it is.
That's a great.
Mike, set it up. That's your job.
That's my idea. I apologize. I won't be at it because I'm, I'm already out of town that day.
That's okay. But if you can set it up in advance for us, it'd be cool. Probably not the six-thirty AM route, but, yeah, it's a little early. Be going to Walmart.
And then commissioners, real quick, not to go back too fast.
Thank you.
There, there, that sixty-two page document, so that actually, that I gave you guys to as a draft, and I know the prosecutor's office is still reviewing it, that actually goes into, I put in there, lease or rental. It's, it dictates out step by step how to go out for, it's right here.